I think the rest of the team is ready to go as well. So let's go ahead and start this meeting up. This is March 19th, 2024, regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors for Lake County. And we're going to start this with a moment of silence. At this moment, none of my colleagues have a moment of silence, but I do want to speak to something that happened on Friday. We had 16 sworn officers, both for correctional and deputies that were sworn in, as well as nine promotions that were provided to our more veteran deputies and lieutenants in all the different positions. And that was a very exciting ceremony to be a part of. And the moment of silence that I would like to have today is just to keep all of our law enforcement, all of our new sworn deputies and correctional officers in our hearts and prayers. They are out there to keep us safe. They are out there to work hard to make our communities better. And sometimes they put themselves in harm's way in order to do so. And I just want to wish them all the best and keep their families and them in our hearts and prayers. Supervisor Green, would you please start us? Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And we are moving on to item number four, consideration of extra items. Are there any extra items from staff or board members?
There are no extra items.
And seeing none from my colleagues, we'll go ahead and move on to approval of the consent agenda. Any items, any board member wishes to pull for further discussion? I see none. I'm going to open it up for public to also do the same, be able to pull an item from the consent agenda. If you are on Zoom, please click on the hand raised icon. And I see no hands in the chambers and no hands on Zoom. So bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the consent agenda as posted items 5.1 through 5.7.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Johanna will get to choose who the second is. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Let's start with 6.1 or 9:02 a.m. item, public input. Is there any public input outside of the agenda items that are on our agenda? We will have public input for those at the time those items are taken up. I see no hands in Zoom and I see no one rushing to the microphone in the chamber. So we will go ahead and move on. Item 6.2, we have pet of the week. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Officer Murray. I have today a one and a half year old pit bull husky mix whose name is Gunner. He's a super sweet, energetic boy. He does really great with other dogs. He's not a huge fan of pigs, which we found out this morning. But he would do great in any kind of home, preferably probably an energetic, high activity kind of home. He does overall just really great. He does normal commands. He's been with us since January. He does pretty good in the kennels, but he is definitely looking for his forever home. So if you'd like to meet him or any of our other pets, you can see us at 4949 Hellbush Drive or call us at 707-263-0278. Thank you.
Thank you so much. He looks very happy. Thank you, Officer Murray and Officer Copus. Let's go ahead and move on to 6.3, our 9:04 a.m. item. Presentation, considering annual delinquent sewer and water tax roll schedule and establish staff direction from Board of Supervisors. Welcome.
Good morning. Mr. Chair, members of the board. Scott Herter, Special District Administrator. I've got Jesse Salmeron, our deputy administrator in charge of finance here with me. So this morning's presentation is just kind of an update on where we are and some changes that we are proposing to make to our policy for delinquency collection and when we annually roll delinquent accounts to the tax roll. We received feedback from the board and from customers last year on the timeframe and just some of the mechanisms around that procedure. And so we've made some proposed changes. We'd like to run that by you, get your feedback before we go into implementing it this year, April, Mayish. Jesse?
Good morning, Board. Thank you for listening to our presentation. Considering the annual delinquent sewer and water tax roll schedule. So in the previous years, all accounts that were 60 days past due would be eligible for tax roll. Would be eligible for a tax roll by the tax roll hearing, which typically occurred in the middle of July. We would send notices out to the customers both in May and in June. Sorry. And in May and in June, depending if they were a odd billing customer or a even billing customer. The proposed changes we're making this year is creating a cutoff date for the delinquency. So our proposal is to create a cutoff point for the final bill of the previous calendar year. That would make December the most current bill to be eligible for the tax roll that occurs in July. What this does is it creates a six month gap in between the delinquent bill and the tax roll hearing. This also establishes a maximum dollar amount that can be taxed ruled. And that dollar amount will be seen on the delinquent notice that we'll be mailing. The, we believe the tax roll letter will be easier to understand by having a clear dollar amount to be paid down and by providing the customer an extended period of time to bring down the balance. So some guidance we are looking from the board is when to send out the delinquent notices. In the past, like I've mentioned, we mailed them out in May and in June. However, we're considering sending them either in April. This gives earlier notice to the customer to pay down the balance or sending them out in May, which is a little closer to the tax roll hearing. So it's a little fresher in the minds of the customers. We're also looking to hear your thoughts and concerns on our new policy and yeah.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Anything more, Director Herter?
No, I think that kind of stomach raises it.
And make sure to speak in the microphone.
The primary feedback that we got from the board and customers last year is that the timing seemed rather short. And if someone was just delinquent, and since we bill on a bimonthly, so it's a 60 day billing cycle, if you were just that far delinquent, you were eligible for tax roll and that seemed rather punitive. So what we've proposed to do is just focus on the previous calendar year. So for example, it would be 2023 calendar year, the last billing cycle in that calendar year. If someone is still delinquent come April, May, when those notices go out for balances in 2023, then they're eligible. But, but if they're not, you know, if they're eligible, well, if they're delinquent on, you know, the first billing cycle in 2024, they're not going to be proposed to be rolled onto tax roll. So it gives them some time to catch their breath, catch up and not be immediately rolled to tax roll. So a little fairer for the customers, a little easier on our hand because it's not a rolling delinquency that we're trying to track. We're just looking at that block, that calendar year. So it'll stretch it a little bit this cycle, but then it's going to be the same cycle and it won't impact us fiscally in the future.
Okay. Any comments or questions regarding the change on policy? Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Obviously, I like the opportunity to get it out earlier so they get that notice. So that's a positive there. And the suggestion also keeping it fresher in the minds of folks as the tax roll hearing is going to come up, I think is also another. I think that's a positive change. So in support of it.
Any other comments? Supervisor Green?
So by eligible, you mean a older debt that you would propose to place on a tax roll?
Correct.
So rather than catching up with the first quarter of this year, for example, and what you're going to bring back for the proposed tax roll, you're just going to focus on 23?
Yes.
Okay. May I never be eligible? All right. Thank you.
And if I'm correct, 23 will be slightly shortened just for the fact that we did do the defaulted properties, I guess, for the lack of a better term. We did that when, in June, July, sometime like that?
Yeah. Yeah. So there was a portion of an captured.
This will be a bit of a shorter one. And then the following year that covers all of 2024 will be the entirety of 2024.
Correct.
For those that are defaulted. Quick question. So I like it. It fits exactly in what we were kind of looking for. That way you're not sending out an extra direct charge on top or an assessment that's $50, $60. That's, that's a very small thing that could potentially be taken care of rather than obviously somebody who hasn't paid for two or three times in a row. What is your policy for, let's say, somebody doesn't pay their first bill and they start accruing all of it? Do you wait till we go through the tax assessment process? Or is there communication with the users prior to that saying, hey, you're not paying your bill? Let's have a conversation just to, just to see if we're asking somebody to pay, making up numbers, $2,000 all at once? Or if you're having the conversation earlier to try and change that before?
Certainly. As soon as they're delinquent, they're receiving late notices. They're receiving proactive communication from our office. They're receiving opportunities to set up a payment plan. We're now enrolled in the LEWAP program, low income water assistance payment program, so that they are eligible through that program for up to $2,000, I believe, one-time payment of utility bills. So we have options and we begin working with them early.
Okay. Is there a point where things get shut off if the delinquency is too long?
On the water side, yes. On the sewer side, not typically. The sewer ordinance does have some language in there on 18 months past due. I've got some questions in with county council. We, we do have an individual who is kind of 20 months, I think, where at that point. Interesting character, pays with postage stamps and all kinds of interesting notes on his bills and sends it in. So we're looking at how to handle that one. So there is provision within the sewer use ordinance. It's just a little more involved. You know, you have to physically go down and cut and cap the sewer lateral and then you're going to want to get code enforcement and environmental health involved because without those utilities, they should not be occupying the residence. So.
Okay. And then my last question is, I know you just changed the way that you do your billing with the larger piece of paper in an envelope rather than a little post-it card, postcard that it used to be. Is it possible to, the heads up about the tax assessment, mix that in so that you don't have to double the amount of mailing? Or is that, does it have to be separate?
We could include it. We would probably have to run those batches separately and possibly hand stuff those.
I'm just curious. I don't know what would be more cost effective or more efficient, just I wanted to ask.
It might be more cost effective to run a separate mailing because I think in order to do it included with the bill, we run that batch and then we're going to have to hand stuff those particular ones in those accounts.
Okay. Appreciate you coming up then showing us this new policy and getting our opinions on it. And it looks like Vice Chair Randall has something to say.
I just wanted to ask, and is there any, is there any thought to ever like doing something with a company or agency that does like a text type of reminder along with the mailer? Because I know that a lot of our community members need the mailer. That's just unequivocal. But there's some folks that you may capture in that aspect. But I know, again, it's, it's got to be feasible. Not trying to, you know.
We've thought about it and I know other departments clearly, like Oaks, County Water Works Department uses a system that has the ability for text messaging out. A lot of that depends too on whether or not the customer wants to provide that mobile phone number.
Right.
And if they want to receive those text numbers.
Thanks.
And then you did kind of ask us a question that I don't feel we gave you consensus on about earlier submitting. I know that there are state laws, but I don't think the law prohibits from earlier sending out. It's just within a certain number of days before we have our public hearing, it needs to be sent out. I know that Supervisor Simon was in favor of it. I'm in favor of the earlier to get people to at least be alerted so maybe they can pay it off as quickly as possible rather than a shorter timeframe. Going to look at other board members to see, I got, we have multiple heads shaking, yes. So please, earlier the better. And that was the only thing that I think we're looking to change here. And so I'm going to open it up for the public unless there's another comment from the board.
Just real quick, you know, I'm not super familiar signing off on policies. So this is just conceptual. Would you be bringing back the policy for final look at? Or are we just giving you direction and letting you run with it?
My impression was that you were giving direction and letting us go with it. It's an internal policy. It's not something that's publicized or codified by the board, but it's, it's more internal, working with the auditor, tax collector, and when we send those delinquencies out.
Okay. The only reason I mention that is, you know, I don't know if we're up here rubber stamping policies, but I don't see the draft changes like attached in a summary document. So you'll be communicating this with your customers anyway, but it'd be nice to have it there, there because I appreciate the notes, but I don't have a written document and neither does the public to really digest other than this oral summary of these changes that you presented. So if it's not going to come back to the board for any type of formal approval, will you be, how will you be communicating this change to your customers?
We could formalize and put it up on our website and send it to the board as well.
Okay.
We do provide a schedule to the auditor controller's office every year.
Okay. And if you, if you can say that on the microphone, sorry.
We do provide a schedule to the auditor controller's office every year.
Okay. I appreciate the question because yes, we want to make sure that the users, those that are involved in the payment, involved in the defaults, are up to date on what's going on and what the process will be. So that was a good question. Thank you for that. If there's nothing further, let's open it up for the public. I see no hands raised in the Zoom room and no hands up in the chamber. And at this moment in time, you have consensus to move forward with this. I do not believe that you need a motion to approve since there's nothing in writing to approve necessarily, but appreciate the conversation. Don't go anywhere.
Wasn't planning on it.
Item 6.4, our 9:10 a.m. item. Consideration of report to the Board of the current status of the Canacti Gardens project and the special district sewer improvement project on Alvida Avenue in Clear Lake to mitigate the development impacts. Director Herter?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Briefly, the Canacti Gardens project, it's a 102 unit multifamily apartment complex off of Old Highway 53 down in Clear Lake. The project's been underway for a few years now. I dug up some emails going back to 2020 on that as well. They were working through the construction. From the onset, we had advised them of what some of the requirements were. They were required to do a hydraulic capacity analysis to determine the project's impact on our sewer system. They were required to pay capacity expansion fees based on the size of the project and the number of units. And then there was a requirement that the onsite improvements be in conformance with our standards. We inspect them and prior to allowing connection to the sewer system, they would have to be inspected and approved. Broad brushstrokes, but those are kind of the three key points on most developments as they happen. Those are the three concerns that we usually have for larger developments. Early on in the process, going back as far as June 2020, we began communication with their project lead. Our staff advised them right up front of those requirements, including the hydraulic capacity analysis. That was relayed back and forth through their civil engineer. We provided the contact information for the firm that has our sewer model in their system and does those hydraulic analysis, speaking with my contact up there, Michael Randall at Jacob's Engineering. The developers engineer and developer staff reached out early on in the process, was provided a quote to do that capacity analysis, but for whatever reason, it wasn't performed. Periodically through the project, as we check in with the developer, we'd remind them of what things were still outstanding prior to occupancy as we were getting closer and closer. It finally came to a head last fall. They were wanting to know what things were still outstanding. Well, those three things were still outstanding. They hadn't paid their capacity fees. They hadn't completed the capacity analysis study and we hadn't inspected the, the improvements. December of last year, I went ahead and just initiated the capacity analysis study with Jacob Engineering on our behalf, advising them that they could reimburse me for it, but we needed to get that process going to understand what potential impact there might be. Draft results from that study were available at the end of January and there was a fairly significant impact from the project to our collection system downstream. The mitigation proposed is an upsizing of about 2,200 feet of sewer main on Alvida Avenue. It's currently undersized. During wet weather conditions, the project, any increase from the project would cause our sewer system to surcharge and spill, not acceptable. Dry weather flows, their project still causes the system to exceed capacity in that region. However, our standard for capacity of the pipe during summer flows is 50% full. So it wouldn't cause it to spill, but it would exceed our design standards. Been in contact with the developers since those came back, those results came back. And we're working towards a design and construction of those improvements before they can connect. The design engineer's recommendation or the capacity analysis engineer's recommendation was that they, they can't connect until those improvements are done. It would result in a sewer spill and, you know, that's not good for us, not good for the regulatory agencies, not good for the community. So there's a, there's a clause within our consultant selection procedures which allows us to directly negotiate with a, with a consultant if it's a continuation of work already done. Jacob's Engineering has our hydraulic model in their system. They've already done that work that is kind of germane and pertinent to the design of those improvements and sizing the pipes. So I'm working with county council. We're going back and forth on a couple of items with Jacob's Engineering to get the design contract in place for that construction project to do those improvements to that 2,200 feet of sewer main. That project's timeline looks like construction this summer, hopefully completing by October, maybe early November. It's pushing it pretty tight to get it done this season, but that's, that's the timeline we're looking at is to hopefully have those improvements done so that then the Canacti Gardens project can successfully connect to the collection system. They have paid their capacity fees. They paid those a couple of months ago. So that item has been checked off. They've been working over the last, I'd say, six weeks probably with our staff and their general contractor. We've been doing the onsite inspections. We're at the tail end of that. It passed the mandrel test, so the pipe's in good condition. Passed pressure tests and leak tests so that we know that's in good shape. We have yet to receive the video. We're going to get that today and then we're going to review that. So that'll, it'll provide us information on whether or not there's any bellies in the pipe or defects in that regard. So we're close to having our inspection of the facilities completed and, and we're looking at getting the mitigation project underway.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions? So I have a couple of questions. You spoke about using Jacob's Engineering for the design process. What, what's post-design process? Is that same emergency ability to use the same company that did the study? Can that similarly be used for the construction? Or does the construction have to go out for RFP? What's that process once the design is done? To kind of better understand what that timeline is.
The construction has to go out to bid. It's, we're anticipating it's going to cost about $300,000. So within the purchasing policy, there is the ability for the Public Works Department, Public Services Department or Special Districts Department. We can negotiate a contract for construction work at force account so we can negotiate directly with a contractor up to $60,000. We can proceed in an informal bid process up to $200,000. So if we anticipate it's going to be less than $200,000, there's a less formal process where we can contact, we can advertise, and we can work with known bidders. And it can still be signed off by the, the director of one of those three given departments. So it's a little less formal. But with this project anticipated to cost over $300,000, it's going to be a formal bid process. So we will advertise for bids, minimum of 15 days. Hopefully we get multiple bids back. We'll open sealed bids, read those aloud and then go through the award process, bring it to the board for award.
Okay. And so even with that, within the timeline, you still feel that by end of October, possibly early November is a possibility? Or is that already a difficult timeline to keep? Because if it's past November and it's the wet season, are you able to continue that type of construction where you can finish at a later time? And at that point, the, the infrastructure would be set and ready and prepared for the capacity needs of the apartment complex? And so then they can open? Or at that point, if you're past November and it's in the wet season, I know construction doesn't always typically happen around that time. Are you going to have to wait till the following year?
Most likely not. Utility construction is a little more forgiving in the wintertime. Paving, road restoration, that sort of stuff. We definitely need the dry weather and we need, we need to do that. But with utility construction, it's a little more forgiving. There's also some, some alternative methods that we could consider, which may expedite things, may address some concerns with open trench cut type construction. Pipe bursting is one option. So they would actually, contractor sets up over two manholes. They attach a mandrel, which is larger than the existing pipe size, but which enlarges the space around it big enough for the new pipe. And then they pull in the new pipe. So it's typically a flexible, high-density polyethylene pipe. And so they drag that through and so they winch that through. That's pretty non-evasive and that can continue throughout the wet season.
Okay. You mentioned that one of the checkboxes left was the, doing the video of the pipe. Is that within the project space itself? Or is that in connection to the system on the street level?
It's within the project space and they've done the video. They're just, we're getting the flash drive of that today. It's actually three flash drives. So that's the, the last outstanding item is reviewing that video.
So obviously crossing fingers that everything checks out when you review that video, that there's not additional things that need to occur.
And we're pretty confident that'll be the case. Unless there's significant bellies, the fact that it passed the mandrel test. So what that is, is we pull a piece of equipment, which is sized to the inside diameter of the pipe, through all the pipes. So the contractor does. That verifies that there's no misalignments, that the pipes are lined up properly, that they're not crushed or collapsed. That passed successfully for all the onsite work. And additionally, it also passed the leak and pressure test. So we're pretty certain that the onsite stuff is in good shape. It's just that's the last step is reviewing the video.
Okay. And then since you're linking down to the Alvida area, which is not next to the project itself, it's further on west, I guess, is the right direction. That's connecting over to pump station two, which then sends it to pump station one. Are those set to go? It's only that 2,200 feet that are necessary to fix. Everything else within the system is capable of handling the additional capacity.
Yeah. There, there will be some additional, you know, increased runtimes for those lift stations, but nothing that requires mitigation at this point in time.
Okay. And there is one thing that I would like to see happen here is I know that you and I spoke back and forth on a couple of different emails and you were talking about once you have a project that at that point you would approach the city. I would like to ask that, and if I can get consensus from the board, that a meeting between special districts, the city and the developers, just because it is an overall project within the city. I think the timeline, it was not the expected timeline at this point in time, that it's being extended potentially through October to early November. And I just think having those conversations to better understand the status and to continue to be up to date on what is happening or what is not happening would, I think, be beneficial for all parties involved rather than not knowing the exact details. So that's what I would request. If there's an approval from the board to say, please make sure to sit down and have those conversations rather than waiting till the design is done and everything else because there is another project that is already happening and this is kind of ancillary to that project, not its own, special project on its own.
Yeah. Certainly wasn't going to wait until the design was done. I was waiting until we had the design contract in place because that, from there forward is a pretty known timeline. We're still working through the details. So once we've got something signed and we've got an agreement, then we can kind of say, okay, here's we are, here's where we are in the timeline. But between our legal and their legal, we're still kind of going back on some of the terms. But yeah, definitely intend to sit down and yeah.
And if I'm correct, the developers were anticipating to potentially move in sometime in April or May? Is that correct? That was their original intent?
Their original intent, I believe, was mid-April, May, yeah.
Okay. Okay. At this moment in time, if there's no further comments or questions, I'm going to open it up for public comments, questions. And I'll, anybody with a hand raised in Zoom? I have, let's go ahead and start on Zoom. I have Kiana Amiri-Divani.
Yes. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kiana Mary Divani. I'm with Myers-Navee, speaking on behalf of our client CRP, Affordable Housing and Community Development. We appreciate your time and consideration of this report. We appreciate your time and consideration of this report. However, some of this information is new regarding the hydraulic capacity analysis to be conducted by the developer. You know, as Mr. Harder was indicating, that conversations have been going back since 2020. However, at no point was it indicated that this hydraulic capacity analysis would be the responsibility of the developer. We're checking on that, and you know, in terms of the last recent six weeks, we've had communications with Mr. Harder, and it wasn't communicated to our client. And we are worried about this impact on the need for occupying the housing project. Obviously, as many of you are aware, affordable housing is a huge problem in the state of California, and to delay this project would be to delay occupancy for hundreds of families in the community who are in need. So we respectfully ask that the board not take any action on this consideration item and have, you know, further conversations with Mr. Harder and his team to discuss what the feasibility would be to potentially connect the project and have occupancy starting in April or May, because it would be due during the dry season, which would not have a huge impact or any impact of connecting in until the wet season. And by the wet season, hopefully, the mitigation project will have been completed.
Thank you very much for your comments. We have Brian Chuisano, apologize if I mispronounced that.
Thank you so much. This is Brian Chuisano from CRP Affordable Housing and Community Development. Yeah, I think that we would like to take you up, Mr. Supervisor, on your suggestion of a meeting with the developer and with the city and with Special Districts in order to further discuss this. As our council has stated, there is an extreme need for us to get the property online in April and May. As we discussed with Mr. Harder in previous conversations over the last few weeks, you know, this is an existential threat to our project, and a delay through to October, November is just absolutely not sustainable, and will financially take a wrecking ball to what is there right now. So I think it's very important that we streamline that conversation. We have over 1,000 applications for those 102 units, so there is a dire need in the area, and we'd like to be part of filling that, and we just hope that we can have a quick conversation with all the interested parties and try and move to a beneficial resolution for both the city, the county, and Special Districts, and the integrity of the sewer system. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. And if you made a comment and didn't want to make another comment, please put your hand down. If your hand is still up and you've already spoken, I'll get back to you after I go through the chamber first. Is there anybody in the chamber that wishes to speak?
Morning Chair Sabatia, Board members. So as Mr. Harder mentioned, this project started initially in May of 2020. We did initial site plan review in early 2021. Special Districts issued a conditional will-serve letter in March of 2021. And I want to go through some things because there's some facts that the board needs to know that haven't been shared with you today. Special Districts did issue a deferral of the capacity expansion fees until the certificate of occupancy was issued, and that happened back in August of 2021. The civil improvement plans were signed by the city, the water district, the fire district, and Special Districts in June of 2022. And really, at that time, there were three sort of important improvements that were needed for the project. There were some fairly significant upgrades to Highland's waters system, primarily for fire flow, to meet fire flow standards. There were some traffic impacts that needed to be mitigated. And as was mentioned previously, there was the possibility of issues in the sewer system that can only be defined by the capacity expansion, or the capacity analysis that was mentioned. And so all of those have been resolved except for the sewer system. Late last year, there was a discussion of what it would take to get the certificate of occupancy initiated by the developer. And Special Districts listed the three things that Mr. Harder mentioned earlier, and I quote, though, first and foremost was payment of the expansion fees which totaled over $1 million, which were paid. And then again, just to refresh, besides that, the capacity analysis being complete, and then inspection and testing of the system. So as I understand it, the capacity analysis has been placed, the responsibility has been placed on the developer by Special Districts. But I think it's important to understand that in order to complete that analysis, Special Districts has to provide information to the developer's engineer, the sewer model, in order to complete that. And so ultimately, Special Districts ended up contracting with Jacobs Engineering to complete the analysis on behalf of the developer. So what are the results? A portion of line along Alvida, it was determined would exceed 50% capacity in the dry season. But that's not the whole story. The report also says that that happens right now. Existing conditions caused that to happen. And the additional impact of this project on that section of pipe is 4.4%. The project, or the analysis specifically says, we could quote from it if you would like, I would encourage you to get a copy of it and look at it. It also says that this portion of the system is overcapacity with or without the project. And, you know, to paraphrase another section for existing conditions related to wet weather analysis, giving these vulnerable conditions in the existing system, we recommend improving this pipe with or without this project. So we have a problem in the system. There wasn't enough leadership to get this analysis done in a timely manner like the other impacts of the project so that they could be resolved. I'm not specifically pointing fingers on who should have done that, but it should have been done. And here we are, less than 30 days from potential occupancy of 52 units. All 102 units are on track to be occupied sometime in May. This development has, developer's been given assurances that this was not an issue as long as Special Districts can complete the project in October and pay a portion of the costs, which they've agreed to do. But today, we have a little different story, and we have a $40 million investment in our community that hinges on this sort of new information, and it's impacting, as was mentioned, hundreds of low-income residents. I think Special Districts and the Board of Supervisors need to figure out a way to provide occupancy to this project as was expected, and move heaven and earth to get this project done. And I do want to mention, there hasn't been communications with the city about this, but this pipe lies underneath a road that was recently repaved by the city, and per our municipal code, Special Districts is going to have to completely replace that road edge to edge, which is going to significantly increase the cost of the project beyond 300,000 to 400,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the room have a comment? And I see no further hands up in Zoom as well. Oh, please, come on up. Joan, you don't need to wait for me to call on you. Thank you.
Joan Moss, I am asking you why this gentleman who represents the legal interests of the city wasn't at the table with you, and why he was given more than three minutes? Thank you. I think you did a very good job and mentioned some very important things. I think you should have been up there with you, so if more than three minutes would have been okay.
Thank you for your comments, Joan. This is not the City of Clear Lake's presentation, so I wanted to make sure that those at the seats were those that were doing the presentation. I did not have a timer on me, and in fact, if it was a fire district, or the City of Clear Lake, or the City of Lakeport, and it's a project that impacts them, I would definitely want to give them the time to be able to express themselves. It's been done before in the past, and I think that we should provide that respect to those agencies as well. There's no further comments. Bring it back to the board. As I stated, I think that we need to see the three entities sit down and discuss it. I hear the city manager's request, and I just, I think it's a rock and a hard place. Connecting creates a whole different situation that we've unfortunately seen multiple times in the past with the atmospheric rivers that have come through. There's more rain coming in again this weekend, not a torrential amount of rain, but to be able to predict the weather throughout the rest of spring, throughout summer, and who knows if it's earlier than October, that it might even come up. It just creates another incident, another issue that does not need to happen. Again, I don't have an answer on how it is that we can make things more correct. Obviously, the timelines didn't all match, and I don't know where the ball was dropped specifically. I couldn't tell you whether that's the developer, Special Districts, or the city. I do not know. I know it makes it difficult when there's that many different partners playing together. But also, I think the new state laws don't necessarily help in the sense that they are pushing to streamline these things where they don't have to go through the process in the same way as others would have had to go through. And I think we need to, I know that Director Harder and I talked about it, you spoke to me about a new potential way to ensure that people can find out if permits have been approved or have been set for that. And to me, it's more of a, how do we make sure this doesn't happen in the future so we can be more efficient in how we go through these projects? And if the conversation between the three, the city, the developer, and Special Districts can find a way that doesn't place more, I don't want to say harm, but potential issues in the way of that area, then I'd love for that to come back to us to see if that's something that we can continue to discuss with. At this moment in time, that's, those are my comments. Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for bringing this item and what I see in front of me, and then I'm getting some backstory here, and it's interesting. I agree. Affordable housing projects, for better or worse, this was pitched ministerially, it's exempt from CEQA. I think an initial study that would have captured all of this and pointed out a roadmap for the various parties to come together on what it's going to take to get this across the finish line probably would have been beneficial, because when we just say it's all ministerial and we'll figure this stuff out on the fly, you know, most of the developers in the affordable housing space are on these razor-thin margins. And so this, I can understand the concerns that have been stated here, both by the developer and the city. And, you know, I don't think the CEQA exemption worked to anyone's benefit in this particular case. If I understood the ask correctly, and I don't know if it's going to come back to us in a more formal manner, it's, what can we do to get an occupancy letter while we figure out how to expand the system? And so the initial request, meet and confer, and try to figure that out, I think is appropriate. But I think it's also appropriate to say, I don't know what the technical aspects would be of allowing them to proceed with at least partial occupancy of the complex while we figure out how to expand it to its ultimate thing. That seems to be what they're asking for, so I'd be interested to hear how that discussion goes.
Any other comments?
So there was some public comment here today in the room, and Scott, I just don't know if you want to respond to any of those comments that were made about timing, information, or anything. I saw you shaking your head on a couple of comments, so I just want to make sure that we talk through this process. As far as mitigating pre-construction and other things, having the city of its project in the city, I absolutely think they need to be at table to talk about these things. But in the information provided today, from day one, on the permits that were given, this was a potential to happen, so.
Yes.
It was on there as one, two, and three.
It was made very clear.
So as a developer, you're always looking at worst-case scenarios, I would think of, well, these are potential projects that I may have to really pay attention to, especially with the sewer hookups, because if we have a spill in Clear Lake, the first people are going to be here are the leaders in Clear Lake saying, why is there a spill in my city? So understanding that process and understanding it's really important.
Yeah, yes. The hydraulic capacity analysis, it was good to have Brian actually on Zoom, because Brian was the contact between him and Ron Conway, the civil engineer for the project, that we had those initial discussions with. And we've got emails between my staff and Brian and Ron indicating that the capacity analysis is required, this is who you need to contact, this is who does it for us. And it's not that the developer needed information from us. Actually, we need information from the developer, or what we do is we put them directly in contact with the consultant who does that hydraulic analysis. So Ron Conway, the civil engineer for the project, gets in contact with Michael Randall, Jacobs Engineering provides the information that Michael Randall needs, they put that into the hydraulic analysis model that they have of our system, and then they identify what the potential impacts are going to be. So that was made very clear from, you know, June of 2020, that that was the process that was going to be required. Like I said, I don't know why it wasn't followed through with. I do know in speaking with Michael Randall that the developer did contact them, they did get a quote for doing the work, never greenlit the agreement, they never proceeded with it past that point. Why, I do not know.
There are other projects obviously happening in the City of Clear Lake, typically trying to move forward.
Correct.
There will be, so making sure that communication. So I'm in support of those pre-construction meetings happening with the City of Clear Lake to talk through these issues with all departments, because as we know, we had a developer in here not long ago, Canocko Red Hills Road, conversation about improving the roadway was a big conversation, so, all right.
Yeah, and then Burns Valley Project, another apartment complex down there, very successful project, we worked very well with the developer. Same situation, same information was prioritized upfront, that process went very smoothly.
Yeah. And appreciate the question, thank you for asking that. I'm looking forward, I don't want to look backwards, I want to make sure that we don't have a situation again in the future where we have almost fully-built homes that cannot be occupied because of something that was missed, no matter who it is that may have missed it, just for the fact that we want to create something that can be utilized and benefits the community. This has some negatives that come along with it. And so I want to figure out, how do we solve this? How can we shrink the timeline? How can we help you get over? That's why I was asking, can we use the same emergency processes? I know that we do have certain emergency powers, not sure if we can use it for this, but anything that we can do to hurry the process. I don't want to solve one problem to create another, but I definitely want to help solve this problem and make sure that we also find a new enhanced way to not get into the same position again. And so I want to keep pushing forward. This is not, this is a frustrating situation, but again, looking forward, not pointing any fingers at any speci, I don't have enough information, but please keep us posted and let us know, because if there's anything that the board can do to help facilitate expediting the process, then I would say approach the board.
Okay, yeah, no, appreciate that. We're doing the same. We're looking to see how we can expedite this, make this construction project happen as efficiently and quickly as possible, get them occupancy in a way that doesn't put the county liability and risk for potential spills. That's a big concern. And then, like we discussed earlier, we're already implementing policies, we're using this as a learning, we're setting certain things in place that this should not happen again.
Absolutely. There's nothing further from the board? And thank you very much, and keep us posted.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 6.5, which was continued from February 6, 2024. This is our 9:45 a.m. item, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending the purchasing ordinance, Article 2021. purchasing ordinance, Article 10 of Chapter 2 of the Lake County Code, to include increased purchasing limits, additional definitions, modify requirements for exemptions from competitive bidding, and additional procedures for informal and formal bidding. Good morning, Ms. Moreno, and our auditor controller, Genevieve Harrington.
Good morning.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. What is that? Oh, yeah, that's right.
So we are presenting the changes to the purchasing ordinance from our last time here on February 6. The track changes did not get published on the board agenda, so I have it up on the screen. As well as I put some copies over here where the public comment is, and handed out copies to you as well. So a few of the changes. Is this good?
Perfect.
Closer. My mouth. Okay. So a few of the changes are to 2-34.1M, which is the purchase order definition. We added, "Purchase orders shall include clear dates of service, detailed description of expected service, dollar amount, and signed by the purchasing agent or assistant purchasing agent and the vendor. Purchase orders are acceptable when another type of agreement is not obtainable after reasonable efforts have been made." The next change is to 2-37.4, from which we added, "The purchasing agent and/or the assistant purchasing agent shall not split purchases or contracts for supplies, materials, equipment, and contractual services to evade the informal or formal purchasing process. Purchases or contracts for the same supplies, material, equipment, or contractual services from the same vendor throughout the year are subject to the corresponding solicitation method under Section 2-39.1 based on the purchase or contract amount for said year." The next change is 2-38.7. So this was a new addition requested by the registrar of voters, and it's election materials and polling places. It's an exemption for competitive bidding, which is pursuant to Election Code 13001 and 14100. The registrar of voters may directly authorize payment rather than purchase order for postage, delivery, slash courier services, and printed paper goods such as ballots, ballot inserts, and envelopes needed for the conduct of any election. The registrar of voters may also directly authorize payment for the items such as extension cords, writing supplies, posters, and flags necessary to maintain the individual precinct supply kits. In addition, the registrar of voters may sign short-term licenses or agreements for space to be used as a polling place, where the space is to be used for fewer than 20 To Section 2-39.1 B through D, there were changes, changing it from "A contract shall be approved by county council" as to "legal form and sufficiency," and we changed it on B, C, and D to read, "A contract for services or purchase order under this expenditure shall be approved as to form by the office of the county council." We also added in D, we changed it from "Said bids or proposals shall be advertised" to "Said invitation for bids or proposals shall be advertised." We don't want to post the responses. 2-41.1, we changed it from "For the purchase of supplies, material, equipment, and contractual services, which requires soliciting formal written bids as specified in Section 2-39.1C, where the department knows what they are specifically looking for, the following procedure shall be observed," and we changed it to "For the purchase of supplies, material, equipment, and contractual services, which requires an IFB as defined in Section 2-34.1Q. Through a formal bid process, the following procedure shall be observed." 2-41.2D, we changed the wording to, from "Publish the RFP on the county website" to "Publish the RFP at a minimum on a county-approved website." 2-41.4, we remove "Purchase orders are contracts shall be awarded by the Board of Supervisors to the lowest responsible bidder as determined below." That is no longer relevant to that section. And then we renumbered 31.4A through C to 41.5 through 6, and, I'm sorry, and 41.56 to 41.4567 and 8. And those are the changes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Harrington, did you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green.
Thank you. Appreciate all the changes and the thoroughness, appreciate the insertion of the language for the registrar of voters. It's a weird statutory creature, but they don't need to ask our permission to run an election. Also wanted to just highlight, on the bottom on page three, and then go into page four on this, there is a definition of emergency. This came up in the last item. I think it's fairly broadly construed, it does take into impact potential delays by contractors and unanticipated things, and such that would potentially, even under the federal definition, there may be some wiggle room on that, on that last item. So I just want to highlight that language, not that we're going to be using it a lot. You're crossing your eyes like maybe I'm saying something wrong, but I stand ready to be corrected, but I find this language to be hopeful, and maybe I'll just leave it at that.
Just to that point, that when there is a disaster, there's a whole different set of provisions that apply, so we won't be, this won't be holding us up in a disaster.
Okay. Yeah. Any other comments or questions regarding this item? So I have two things. So one, I definitely want to increase the amount for the fact that I think it would help with efficiencies, with just standard day-to-day business, where you don't have to ask permission to buy a simple thing. Unfortunately, simple things can cost a lot of money, and anything over $25,000 comes to us in order for approvals. So leaving it at where it is is not appropriate, in my opinion. I asked for the spreadsheet for all of the other counties that were compared and contrasted with, and just random selection, Riverside, Napa, Mendocino are all at $50,000 at their maximum, or more than $50,000 is when you need that permission. And just as a side, Riverside has a couple, I think it's $4 billion budget in comparison to our approximate 350 million, it's a little higher than that. Humboldt's at 75, or 70,000? Humboldt's at 70,000? And then when you start looking at who's at 100,000, you have Marin County, you have LA, you have Monterey, Sacramento, San Diego, and I'm not reading the whole list, but the one that kind of stands out as being a little weird is Del Norte at 200,000. That one's kind of an outlier. But there is a much shorter list of those that are in the 100,000-plus than there is of less than 100,000. And while I'm not going to mix agenda items, there's two reasons why I would prefer not going to the 100,000. I would prefer sticking at anywhere between 50 and 75. I'm willing to go to 75, but anything higher, I don't think is a appropriate service to the public. By forcing it on our agenda, it teaches us what our departments are working on, which also informs the public as to what our departments are working on. And part of our job is to oversee the fiscal part of our budget to ensure that it's being spent in the appropriate ways that we feel it should be spent on. And I think the ability to have the knowledge of what is happening, and the ability to say, hey, stay on track, that's not what we're looking to spend it on, is something that I think that we need to hold on to and not expand to such a large amount, where 100,000, again, in comparison to a 350, 380 million budget versus 100,000 to a couple-billion-dollar budget, is vastly different, in my opinion. So I think for us being, continuing to have transparency with the public and with ourselves of what our departments are working on, I think it would behoove us not to jump to a higher level that, again, a minority of counties are utilizing, not a majority of counties are utilizing. And then there's potential issues. Granted, none of this is issues within, it's issues of what happens when something outside of our abilities happens. Later on, we're going to be talking about borrowing some money to help pay for things because there's some issues at the state level. By us not having oversight on some of these contracts or some of these expenses is also us getting into a potential situation where, how do we get there? And I think that, again, I want to increase it, I want to create efficiencies, I want to help, but I also don't want to suddenly jump to an amount that feels like it's not proportionally appropriate for Lake County to reach to at this moment in time. And so those are my comments, and then there was, sorry, one more comment. There is the, I've had, and I won't name names, but department heads that have reached out saying, we haven't seen this. And this does impact department heads. I don't know if that's changed in the last few days, but that was, those were comments that I received, and want to make sure that we do get their feedback, since they're the users of this change to the article. And I know that one of the hesitancies is the potential inefficiency of having to go through admin prior to being able to continue, and that's, I don't know what's the appropriate way. I know we need to correct some of our past behavior when it comes to RFPs, especially, I'm kind of drilling on the RFP process, but I also don't want to say this is how it has to be without understanding what the potential repercussions should be. So those are, I would like to make sure we get those comments from department heads in order to better understand what should and should not happen, and if that has happened and I'm being told otherwise, then I'm being told otherwise, and that's not correct. So as Supervisor Green mentioned earlier, please correct me if that is not what the process has been.
Yes, we actually had a meeting a few weeks ago with a few of the department heads that were contacting us, asking questions about it, and so we had a meeting with Genevieve and with Lloyd, and hashed out some of those issues, and have made the corrections into the purchasing ordinance. We haven't heard from too many department heads, just a few.
And thank you for that, and was unaware of that, so I appreciate the update. I know that we are.
I want to add, it was also presented at a department head meeting, so all department heads have the opportunity to review and give feedback.
Okay. And I know that most make it to the department heads' meetings, but not all are able to.
Or best to include.
The, the sign to form, or the approved to form from county council, that makes perfect sense. Getting an RFP number, is that as simple as I'm thinking that that should be? Like if you're in a database and you just have a new line, it automatically has the new number? Is that as simple as that is, or does it require staff time?
We just have it on an Excel spreadsheet, and we track, we assign a number, who requested it, what it's requested for, when it might be posted. It's a two-minute conversation, if that.
That's, that's my thought process, I wanted to check in and make sure of that. So those are my comments. As is, I cannot approve by increasing the amount to the amount that is being offered. Again, I think for public transparency, for our knowledge of what our departments are doing, I think it's important to keep it at a certain threshold. Any other comments?
Yeah, and I'll just, to your point, I don't see it as a proportionality thing, like the size of our budget versus, you know, 100K doesn't go as far as it used to. So, you know, when are we going to spin up an RFP? When we can just live within our means, you know, and, and, you know, I appreciate what you did raise, what you didn't raise is, you know, there's some staff overhead, and, you know, we don't want to just be spinning up RFPs for the sake of doing it. You know, there's a bang-for-the-buck calculus that we have to make with that. So if we're doing a bunch of RFPs, we're seeing a bunch of variances, and we're really, you know, holding the line on expending public funds, that'd be one thing, but if we are just following what, you know, keeping up with the Joneses, I think the 100K figure, even if it isn't used by the majority of counties, someday it will be. So if we're an early adopter, if we can give some additional flexibility to our own staff to kind of like, you know, lighten up on their RFP burdens, it doesn't hurt public transparency in any way that I can see. The big contracts are still coming up to us, and all the other stuff will come out during budget. So I'm very comfortable with this as proposed.
One clarification on the RFPs, they've been required at 50,000 and are still going to be required at 50,000, we're not changing those limits. What we're changing is when it comes to the board. So if they had to do an RFP before, they still will.
I stand to be corrected. Again, thank you, thank you, but thank you for that clarification.
I heard a mic switch, was there a comment? CIO Parker?
If I may. With regard to the public knowledge of what our different departments are doing, I think once we have our infrastructure strategic plan, which will be updated quarterly before the board and the public, will help inform not only each of the departments, but the community as a whole.
Thank you.
And some of the additional tracking that we're doing, just the contract managing overall, is helping with some of the oversight, so you feel like you might, you might be losing a little bit by not seeing every contract come this way, but it is being, there is additional oversight that wasn't there before. So in conjunction with increase in threshold, there is going to be an increase in oversight and tracking, and so it's not just a one-sided situation.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments, oh, any comments from the public on this item? I see no hands up in the Zoom room, and no one getting up in the board chambers, so I'll bring it back to the board.
Move to waive the reading of the ordinance and have it read in the title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay. Motion carries, and let's read the title.
Okay, it's an ordinance amending Article 10 of Chapter 2 of the Lake County Code to include increased purchasing limits, additional definitions, modify requirements for exceptions from competitive bidding, and additional procedures for informal, informal bidding.
And then move to advance the second reading of this ordinance to the next regular meeting, which is next Tuesday?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all this work. This was a lot.
It is.
All right, next, we're going to move on to our 6.6 item, 10 a.m., consideration of a presentation from Nielsen Merxheimer on the 2024 legislative session, state budget, and potential bills of interest. Deeply apologize if I butchered that last name.
Good morning, supervisors. Matthew Rothstein, Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer. As you are aware, Nielsen Merxheimer serves as Lake County's advocates in Sacramento, and I'm pleased to introduce Jeff Neal from Nielsen Merxheimer, who will present a report on the first months of the 2024 legislative session. This presentation will highlight some of the 2,000-plus bills introduced since January and other state-level matters with relevance to your board's 2024 legislative priorities which you adopted during your January 23, 2024 governance workshop. Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Matthew. Good morning. Thanks for taking a few minutes and allowing me the honor of coming up and addressing you today. I'm Jeff Neal, Senior Legislative Advocate at Nielsen Merxheimer. There are actually several other last names in the name, too, we just don't even bother with them. Happy to hear. Happy to hear to talk to you about the, to be here to talk to you about the Legislative Session so far. I work together with my colleague Michelle Rubikava, partner at Nielsen Merxheimer, she couldn't be here today because the legislature is in session, and we have a number of bills that we're supporting in committee today, so she's doing that, and I get to come up here. We can go on to the next. And one more. So we are, just take one moment to talk about the firm, we are a diverse firm, we've been around since the 1970s, represent a number of local agencies, including several other counties, but we don't just do public agencies, we have a number of other clients as well, associations, private businesses, and because of that, we're able to maintain a broad set of relationships in the legislature, both parties, you know, the moderate Dems, the Republicans, the progressive Democrats, and because of our backgrounds, Michelle most recently since Nielsen Merxheimer at the County of Los Angeles, she worked for the Medical Association as their attorney, I worked at CSAC for many years, so we're able to bring our experience to work for you now. Next slide. So the legislature, right now, of course, we'll have an election in November, as we know, is strongly tilted in favor of the Democrats, both the Senate and the Assembly have several more Democrats than even a supermajority, and this matters because the, whereas once the Democrats needed to convince a couple of Republicans in order to do any of the things that require a supermajority vote, now it's the moderate Democrats who have that, who have that place. So the Republicans in Sacramento, anyway, are, you know, not as involved as they were even just a few election cycles ago, and it really is Democrats' game. We do have two new leaders in the legislature, both of them within the last year, Senator Mike McGuire, of course, is the Senate President Pro Tem, and Robert Rivas from Salinas, or from Hollister, moved between the two, I think, as the Assembly Speaker. This is the first time anyone knows of, in memory or in records, that the leaders have both been from more rural areas of the state. You know, we're all interested to see how that plays out, especially, you know, with Senator McGuire, his focus on wildfires over the last several years, we're hoping we'll bring some increased attention to those matters. Speaker Rivas grew up in a farming family, you know, grew up in the fields with his parents, and so really a different mindset than, you know, if they're just from San Francisco or Los Angeles. And the legislature's priorities are up there, a lot of focus on housing and homelessness the last couple of years, that will continue. We have the bonds, potential bonds are a big source of interest this year, as well as retail theft, which, of course, became a big issue last year, and they're focusing their attention more on it this year, water, and then the behavioral and mental health issues that, of course, were recently on the ballot. Next slide. Proposition 1 is one of the big items for counties, of course, from the ballot, still hanging on by a thread, the opponents conceded last week, but you can't concede a ballot measure, it's not, you can't give up the race, and it continues to be, I think, closer than most people thought. This 50.4% is outdated, last time I looked, yesterday it was at 50.1, it's only leading by about 20,000 votes. The governor put off his State of the State address, which was scheduled originally for yesterday, and most people believe it was because, because of the fate of Prop 1 hangs in the balance here, the number of ballots left to count across the state. A lot of us thought it was going to start pulling away after election night as the late ballots were counted, and that has not happened at all, it's, in fact, gotten even tighter. But there's a lot of change coming to the legislature between last, the last election cycle and this one, after November, I guess, starting in December, we'll have almost half of all the legislature will have changed over, just across two elections. It's partly because of the timing, the new term limits were put in place 12 years ago, and that's the new term limit, so a lot of those folks are changing out. It's not really half of the legislature, because several of those new senators are coming from the Assembly, but it still changes that body considerably. And, and in fact, if sort of the common wisdom holds about who will win in many of those elections, one of the houses, the Senate, will actually have a majority of women for the first time ever in California. It'll be, 21 out of the 40 senators will be women, and the two bodies together will actually be closer to parity than California has been before. Next slide. So the biggest piece, you know, what's really controlling the conversation in Sacramento is the massive budget deficit, after a couple of years of massive surpluses, one of which didn't actually exist, but we didn't know that because of the, when they did the last budget, they didn't actually know how much money the state was going to have, they had less of an idea than they usually do because of the IRS deadline moving from April to the fall. So this $73 billion budget deficit is really three years of deficit rolled into one, two of the years weren't known about before because of that filing delay by the IRS, that the IRS decided, and of course, California followed suit for the state's income tax deadline. And so the governor's January budget proposals included significant cuts, large reductions to K through 12, in fact, K through 14 education, a lot of cuts to housing programs, which I think surprised some folks, given the governor's focus on housing programs over the last few years, and really significant both cuts and deferrals to climate and resource programs. Some of those are cuts and delays, and some of them are really moving what's currently in the general fund to be funded from other sources, like the Greenhouse Gas Reduction But last week, after this presentation was finalized, the Senate released their plans for their early action, they can save a little bit more money by acting before June, they're proposing to adopt many of the governor's least painful proposals, including taking some money from the state rainy day fund, as well as borrowing from the MCO tax to, for part of the general fund, a number of the cuts and deferrals that are, like I said, the least painful, some deferrals to UCCSU, and they're trying to get agreement this week. The governor's all for it, most of them are his proposals anyway, didn't come out and exactly say that, but he's given that indication, and it really puts the ball in the Assembly's court, and how they, how they want to deal with it. They have to pass at least the updated MCO tax by the, essentially by the end of this week, next week is the legislature's spring break, and that MCO tax needs to be changed because of some federal deadlines that are coming up. So the rest of it, they'd like to pass no later than the week after that, so they can get some of the savings from the current fiscal year before the budget year, and have a little bit less to deal with in June. So by there, Matthew, you know, there was a bit of a disagreement over the size of the deficit, the LAO Legislative Analyst Office now says $73 billion, because the January revenues came in poorly as well, the governor's, you know, estimate was a little bit lower than that, partly because he was figuring in the K through 12 reductions, and so, but passing this, it'd be about, the Senate's early action plan is about $29 billion, including the rainy day fund, which is almost half of that. And so that would reduce the number they have to deal with in June, but it would put off most of the most difficult cuts. We can go to the next slide, where we can see some of the more difficult cuts, for counties, anyway. A number of cuts to Cal Works are proposed, the single allocation is a direct cut to county administration for Cal Works, it would be an ongoing cut into future years, the family stabilization program, the expanded subsidized employment, these are obviously programs that the county runs on behalf of the state and federal government, and they'd be cut and/or eliminated, along with the family urgent response system. Counties are coming out fairly strongly against these proposed cuts because of the impact on, on the county, and of course, on all the people you serve. For SB 678 grants, these are grants that go to the probation, they're incentive grants to, you know, try and prevent people from recidivating and going back to prison, they've been frozen for the last few years as the, the effects of, one of the effects of the pandemic was a lot of changes in, in folks being recidivated, and the, the state is now saying that a lot of those effects have passed, things are pretty much back to normal, and they recommend unfreezing the SB 678 formula, going back to the year annual data to change it, which will result in reductions for a lot of counties. There's also a third year of grant funding for the public defenders offices for resentencing grants, that they're proposing to pull back the third year of funding, which would be for next year, also a direct cut to counties. And then cuts to Cal Homes and a number of other housing programs that local agencies are able to take advantage of. And next slide, we'll look at Lake County's priorities, I don't need to spend too long on this, you guys, you are the ones who adopted them, but just as we go into some of the bills of interest, to review them real quickly, the water reliability, obviously, the wildfire resilience, and vegetation management, not a lot of bills yet on Lake Pillsbury, but, you know, we're trying to get some of those conversations going, housing, homelessness, economic development, and the opioid fatality crisis that the state's facing are all items that were on your priority list. We'll go to the next slide, and look at, start looking at some of the bills that are out there that might be of interest. The first, first two are the bonds, these are, these were talked about a lot last year, they're still being talked about a lot this year, one of the things that's affecting the calculus on these bonds is, you know, one, what's the right size, that's been the question the whole time, a lot of folks in the legislature are definitely interested in putting some kind of resources, climate, forest, wildfire, water bond, all of those things in one, or several of those in a bond. The tight race for Prop 1 has got people talking quite a bit about the voters' appetite for bonds, polling remains good for some kind of resources, climate, water, fire bond, and so there's a lot of, a lot of people in Sacramento trying to figure out if the close vote for Prop 1 is because of the governor, or if it's because of the MHSA changes that were paired with it, or, or what. But for now, the bonds that are in print since last year are about $15 or $16 billion, they put the bulk of that money into drought, flood, and water, about a third of it, the next big chunk is for forest management, wildfire resilience and mitigation, and then clean energy, coastal protection, a lot of biodiversity and nature-based solutions for climate change, extreme heat, they start to differ a little as they get down to the smaller amounts. One of the conversations that's going on between the Senate and the Assembly as they work on these proposals is, should they be large, general pots of money that allow the state to then give grants as projects come in, or should they have specific earmarks in them for specific projects? And then, of course, there's all the middle ground in between that, how specific do you get when you're saying what the money is eligible for? Specifically say it's for dead trees, for, you know, vegetation management near power lines, or do you say it's for wildfire prevention and forest management of all kinds, or something in between? So that'll be a significant discussion all year this year, they have approximately until the end of June to put, for the legislature to put things on the ballot, they can push that deadline, but your county registrar would not be a fan of them doing that. I think the latest anything was ever put on the ballot was late, mid to late September, the registrars were not happy, rightfully so, it's a lot of printing costs that that puts off. And let's go on to the next slide, two, really two slides left here, just want to talk about a few bills that do either address your priorities or have a direct, significant impact on, potential impact on counties. The first, the first slide here is really just for wildfire bills. There are a couple of bills about wildfire projects that are near roadways, this bill by Assembly Member Fong is one of them, it would be a sequo exemption for wildfire prevention within 50 feet of a road, AB 3150 by Assembly Member Sharon Quirk Silva would, you know, is about the high, the fire hazard severity zone maps, there'd be an opportunity for more public review, there would be an opportunity for people to petition for redesignation for those fire hazard severity zone maps. SB 1003 by Senator Dodd, you know, has to do with those vegetation management plans by the investor-owned utilities, and it would require them to make sure that they're paying attention to, that they're emphasizing how quickly those, their plans can be put into action, and making, trying to get them to do it in the quickest amount of time possible. Important to note that all of these bills are essentially in their first form, as we go through the legislative process, go through policy committees, they hear from stakeholders, both opponents and supporters, these bills are all likely to change sometimes fairly significantly. One that didn't make it on here because it wasn't in print when we were making this last week was SB 946 by Senator McGuire, is a bill that would affect really just three counties in the state, including Lake County, there were some home hardening grants, there's a pilot program, San Diego, Lake County, and I believe Shasta County are the three pilot counties. This bill would say that those home hardening grants are not taxable as personal income because unfortunately, they are currently, and that really mitigates the benefit of it when you get some grants to make your home safer from fires, and then you get a tax bill for a couple thousand dollars, that's a, that's pretty tough. So that one was just amended late, late last week, wanted to mention that one. And then the last substantive slide, just about some bills on other topics, AB 2871 would allow counties to create overdose fatality review teams, this is to deal with the overdose crisis in the state, I think 11,000-plus people in California died last year of overdose fatalities, doubled what it was just a few years ago, and that was double what it was just a few years before that. Is permissive bill, it's modeled on the review teams that counties have for other types of deaths, where it allows different departments and some outside stakeholders, too, who are appointed to the review teams, to share what would otherwise be confidential information, medical information, just within the team, so they can figure out, make recommendations about what the county can do to try and bring those fatalities down. AB 817, which I believe Lake County supported last year, is in support of, is moving through the process this year, there was a change in the chair of a key committee, and eased the passage a little bit, so that got through its policy committee in January, and obviously have to do with remote participation for Brown Act meetings, making that a little easier. AB 2514 exempts counties under 70,000 population from the organics diversion targets, I believe that's a RCRC-sponsored bill, to help deal with that difficult timeline under that bill, under 1383. And then the last one is an employment bill, AB 2561 by Assembly Member McKinnon, say that if counties or any public agency has bargaining units where the vacancy rates are above 10%, which, from conversations I've had with counties, are pretty much every county, that the county has to meet and confer, create a plan to fill all the vacancies, all of the vacancies, within six months, and then implement that plan in those six months. I think this is an example of a bill that will change considerably as it moves through the process, if it moves through the process, because it would have an extraordinary effect, I think, I think it'd be very difficult to implement, might have unintended consequences that the author doesn't intend.
Why did they pick 10%?
That's a fantastic question, maybe so that they would catch everyone up in it, it's a possibility, because maybe it's different for some smaller cities, but I think for, I mean, there are some, there are some types of positions that for counties, you're never going to have full, essentially, at least in the current employment environment, I know for a lot of counties, it's very difficult to fill deputy sheriff positions, you know, you get into some of the jail medical types of positions, you know, nurses and whatnot, especially psychiatric positions, and especially in jail, I mean, those are all very difficult positions to fill, there aren't enough mental health and behavioral health professionals in the state right now for anyone, private or public, at any level of government, to- for anyone, private or public, at any level of government to, to hire. So I think some of those are, I think there are a lot of conversations that public agencies can have with the author and, you know, you start in one place, you know, you're going to negotiate, you know, you hope, you hope to get, so maybe it's just a strong position, a strong negotiating position to start from.
Let us know how we can be helpful in that because we would love to have 10% vacancies.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of counties I've talked to have 20, 25, even 30% plus vacancy rates, which is, which is tough. And you know, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do? I would be interested to see what goes into the implementation plans because I think a lot of counties would love to have some of those solutions that are doable and reasonable presented to them so that they could implement them. So I think the last slide is just a thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up and talk to you this morning. Happy to talk about any other, you know, state policy items. Happy to be working with you. It's been great working with your administration team and of course, talking to all of you about your priorities going into this year.
Thank you very much for your presentation and thank you for those private conversations as well, just to be able to initiate this process. Any, Vice Chair Crandall.
Do you have any information if they're moving or looking at reforming anything to do with AB 1054?
On, from, from which year?
Let's see here, I'll find it. It's right here. It's from the fire victims. I have the information right here, so let me pull it up. Yes, it was, it was a bill that was created, I want to say.
This was the one after the Sulfur Fire in 2017?
2017, 2018. This, this bill and this funding was put together because of the victims. However, the victims aren't, don't have the opportunity to access it as of now. So they're, they're looking to see if there's anyone that's going to push or reform it so that they can access that, that funding and be made whole again. So yeah, I was gonna, I'm meeting with others to get more information on this and also talk with RCRC to see what they have going.
That's a, that's a great, that's a great question. Let me look into it. I haven't heard about anything yet, but I do know that, as I said, Senator McGuire in his new position is hopefully going to bring some more focus to, to some of these items. I do think that the bill that I mentioned that wasn't on the list, SB 946, is another important county bill that's, that's SB 964. So it all gets a little confusing, but SB 946, I think will, will expand from what we've heard beyond just the home hardening income tax exemption, you know, so maybe it will include some, some other items like this, either about fire victims or about community hardening, home hardening. Let me look into that and, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you for that question. Anything further? Supervisor Green?
Just a question more than a comment. I didn't see any cannabis bills in there. This is a cannabis regulating county. And on occasion, we get questions from our growers and concerns that may track closer with the state regulations and the Department of Cannabis Control, the state excise tax and what have you. So I know this board has not previously signaled that we would like to do at least some minor tracking of cannabis bills, but if, if we're going to be serious about supporting our local growers, we have to not only take ownership of our local regulations and we're well along a process where we're going to be redoing our local ordinance, but there are much bigger issues at play at the state level that I don't necessarily know our, our local grower base has a full appreciation of, and I know I don't have a full appreciation of just because we haven't had the opportunity to talk in a venue like this and say, there's a lot going on. And I know Senator McGuire in his new position represents not just Lake County, but several cannabis-producing counties. So I don't want to put a whole new division on you or expectations, certainly not with the consensus of the board, but I'm personally interested in tracking cannabis legislation. There's a lot going on at the state level that can benefit our local growers.
There is, and that's been a fairly active area for a lot of legislation the last two or three years. There are a lot fewer bills introduced this year on it. I think there's a lot going on at, at the agency level, right, at the, at the department level. My sense is that the legislature feels like they've done what they were going to do. There could still be a couple of bills that pass for sure, but it seems to be less of an emphasis now than it has been for the last couple of years, but we will be sure to keep an eye on it. In fact, I realized when I, when I walked into the room, you know, the memories hitting the last time, I believe it was the last time I was here, I was at CSAC at the time, it was a number of years ago, was, was when the first cannabis ordinances were first being proposed and the room was considerably fuller. Then it was the first public hearing in front of the board of the first set of cannabis regulations for the county and it was, it was packed in here. It was raucous. It was a good time. So anyway, I will keep, I'll keep an eye out for it and, and let you know if we see anything that.
I think 820 is doing pretty good. It passed 36-0 in January as well, and that has to do with the Senate Bill 820 has to do with search or seizure of property provisions currently applicable to unlicensed manufacturing. It's based off of the moonshining situation for unlicensed commercial cannabis activities. That's one of them, but I don't, I know you're referring to more like regulation with cannabis, but this is illicit grows and things like that. So it's still moving along. It's sponsored by RCRC too.
Yeah, that's, that's good. And the illegal grows have been an area of increasing interest, you know, a lot of, it affects a lot of other areas, right? It affects, it affects water. It affects some of the, some of the violence issues in some counties in particular, you know, it affects the, the environmental issues as well because of the unlicensed grows use.
I always say it's the dark cloud that we can't even gather any data on, but we know it's contributing to a lot of our issues throughout the state and in our local governments as well. So yeah, to get, to get control over this would be really helpful. I also asked state representatives and even the governor, like activate the National Guard to help with this. I mean, like.
Yeah, and I know former CSAC president from Riverside County had this as, you know, was something, Chuck Washington was something that he brought up quite a bit during his presidency because they have a big issue with it in Riverside County as well. They don't have a big lake in Riverside County and they, you know, a lot of canyons with chapparal that, that people are doing this in. So he was able to push that quite a bit. Good to see that it passed in January, you know, as the second year of a two-year session. Any bill that didn't make it out of the first house in the first year, it has that end-of-January deadline to, to do so, or it's dead for the two-year session. So you know, with the, with the leaders changing, a lot of the chairs changing, I mentioned it with AB 817, I think more, more, more two-year bills passed in, out of committee in January this year than, than, than do most years because of some of those committee changes.
What about insurance?
Yeah, and it's a tough one because you both, right? We want, we want everybody to have it and we want everybody to be able to afford it. It's tough to force the insurers to, to stay in the state, right? And it's, you know, we have people now who feel like they live in an urban area who are being canceled, right, by their insurance companies. Harder, you know, in a, in a not fire-prone area, they, they feel that way. It's harder in the, in areas that are more prone to wildfires. The insurance commissioner is taking a while to make some of the changes, but the, it doesn't seem that there's a way to change the system that meets all three of those requirements, right? Because the, the safe plan has extremely low liquidity right now with extremely high liabilities. And so they need to figure out a way to both, you know, there was supposed to be the insurer of last resort, you guys know this better than I do, last resort has far more policies on it now than it was ever designed for. And it, you know, there was a hearing, it was last week, maybe it was the week before, where they talked about how much money they have to cover those liabilities and it is not a sufficient amount of money. And, and in addition to that, we need to bring even more people onto the plan. You know, there are bills to require the plan to bring on, you know, I would call multifamily, mostly condominium developments, to allow them to bring on commercial, commercial policyholders. All those things will increase the liabilities. Hopefully it can also increase the, the amount they have to cover those liabilities. But you know, you have to raise the rates or the insurers won't stay. You have, if you bring down the price rate, all, all three of those things pull against each other. So I think there, it's an area, maybe one of those rare areas where there's a lot of focus, but very, very few actual bills because there's, you know, on some of the things, homelessness, housing, there's a thousand ideas about what we can do to make it better, right? Or to change it in ways that would, that would maybe help a little bit or, or get out of the way at least. And this is an area where it's, it's, we just need one solution, but I don't think anybody now quite knows how to, how to get there. So the insurance commissioner has, you know, started to make some changes to the, to the fair plan, but it's going to be a tough, it's going to be a tough go.
And how, the offloading isn't going very well either.
No. Yeah.
Okay.
Any further comments, questions?
So I do have one thing that's not on here and maybe I'm asking you to look in a crystal ball. I believe that we have been told, I don't know if it's from the governor's office or LAO, that we should be anticipating multiple years of deficits, not just this single year. Do you have any more information that you can provide as to what is being projected for the state to help us better prepare? I mean, this is great that you're looking at the bills and those things that could change, but the finances, when we're doing our budgets and preparing is also very helpful. Do you have any further information on where we stand and how that's being projected at this moment in time?
Yes, for the state anyway, and the ways that it might, that it might trickle down. You're right that it's a, it's a multi-year problem and it's not one that will go away on its own. It's at this point a permanent structural deficit. So while the 73 billion or 58 billion or whichever the numbers you want to take, as I said, those represent kind of a three-year budget problem because of the IRS delay in the deadline for filing taxes, but that, it's not three years, it's three years up to now. Going forward, about 24 to maybe on the high end, 30 billion is an ongoing deficit. So they both need to make one-time cuts, which are the easier ones to make. Those are some of their deferrals and, and whatnot that they're proposing, but they do need to find 20 to 30 billion dollars in, in permanent solutions. You know, the way that Prop 98 works for school funding, some of that is close to automatic when the state's general fund changes. Not to say that schools won't ask for those cuts not to be made or at least to be, to be mitigated, but Prop 98 provides a minimum guarantee for that funding and the minimum goes up and down depending on the state's general fund performance. So that's, but that still leaves tens of billions of dollars to deal with. I think we do know from experience that that tends to trickle down in the way that the, the revenues don't always, when the revenues are high, that the deficits do tend to. And that's where we saw some of the, some of the cut proposals, right, to the single allocation for CalWorks, to, you know, some of the deferrals for some of the bridge housing programs or other housing programs. We know that HAP is, does not, you know, is, is a one year at a time. It's not permanent for the, for the homelessness grants from the state. And you know, there's no proposal to make them permanent. I think it's entirely possible that those are significantly reduced or go away. Those are almost the easy ones to do because they're not in law in future years, right? You just stop, stop funding it. So I do think the counties in particular, because of our close fiscal and program relationship with the state, should prepare for lower amounts of money from the state to, to perform even the programs that the state requires, requires you to perform. You know, there is an effort underway right now between all the county associations, CSAC, RCRC and the urban counties of California to try and reinvigorate the process for claiming mandates from the state. There's a, you know, when the state tells any local agencies they have to do something and they don't provide revenue to do so or fee authority, while there are a lot of exceptions to it, I want to be real upfront about that, there are a lot of exceptions to it, it is still in the constitution that they have to provide the reimbursement. And under the last administration, under Governor Brown's administration, they kept that requirement top of mind and tried to pass policies in a way that didn't mandate the counties do things or that when they did, they came with funding attached. I do think that the current administration has not been as focused on, on that. There have been a lot of, a lot more mandates that have come down, many of them with insufficient funding or none. And so I think that has sparked an interest in trying to get some of those things funded. The Commission on State Mandates, I mentioned that, that's not the, that's not the whole solution. It's not going to make county budgets whole. It's just, it is one thing that we're starting to look at, you know, as your representatives in Sacramento about how to at least help on some of these areas. So that might address, for example, Care Court is one of the big ones that's, that's coming down. See, the cohort one counties have already implemented it. There's going to be some expenses with that, that, that the, that the state isn't providing enough money to cover all of the expenses. They're providing parts of it, but not all of it. I think there are some other issues like that where, where the mandates can be helpful, but I, I do think that, you know, obviously we will continue to resist some of the, the cuts that will affect counties most acutely, but, and those are some of the things that we'll, we will keep an eye out for and let you guys know about so you can tell us which ones we should spend most of our time and effort trying to change their minds about. But you know, I was, I was at CSAC and that whole decade of, of the 2000s to 2010, there were deficits just about every year at the state level in it. They seemed to get bigger and bigger every year as we went. State policy was a lot different back then. It was a lot harder for the state to pass a budget. That didn't help, but those are, those are very difficult years and I think we might be in for, for a couple of those here coming up.
Thank you very much. Anything further? Michael, did I cut you off on something you would say?
Just wanted to thank you for the good times reference to the full room we had back then. There were times, they weren't always good.
I was wondering if Supervisor Simon felt the same.
Yeah.
That's open it up for, open it up for public comment. I see we have one hand up, Betsy Khan. No, no, I'll get to you in a second, just pointing to you saying I saw you.
Mr. Chair, am I allowed to speak now?
Yes, please. Sorry about that.
Thank you. I was confused by your last statement. Our, many rural counties, almost all rural counties are profoundly impacted by the exportation of medical care where our hospitals are not providing local surgery and in-house services. And that impacts our fire protection districts because they are the ones who provide the inter-facility transfers and ambulance services. They no longer have that ability to do that. And Lake County is, is putting a significant pinch on the levels of service and I wonder if there's any area of legislation that is working on addressing those issues for us.
Thank you for your comment. Would you be able to answer if there is such legislation that is looking at that?
I can't think of any offhand. There's certainly a lot about healthcare generally. I think the issue that I've heard about the most among, I mean, there's a lot of focus on the behavioral health and mental health care, of course. I actually think most closely related to, to the, the public comment there is a lot of focus, although no bills that I know of right now, on the maternity wards that are closing all around the state. I think something like 24 in the last four years and another 24 in the, or more 30 in the, several years before that. the several years before that. But not, but not to the general or acute care generally. There was the legislation that passed last year that created a $700 million fund for hospitals, public hospitals that had, not just public, sorry, that had either recently closed or were in danger of closing. State got that out fairly quickly and got, got most of that money out to hospitals that were identified as, as that. I mean, there's a lot of, there are a lot of pressures on, on the hospital, I guess, industry right now, financial pressures in particular, partly because of COVID, partly COVID just exacerbated some of the existing ones. So sorry, I don't know of legislation on that specific topic, but hopefully the money they passed last year helped some of those stay open and we'll continue to look for it.
Okay. And then as, also as a response, I know that the Health Steering Committee that I'm a part of, NACO, did pass a resolution to increase reimbursement rates to EMS transport. And so that one is kind of seeking a congressional individual that might take interest in taking on this bill, and NACO staff would be working with them. And so I'm following that. I actually co-sponsored that, and so I, I would like to see that happen, and that could be potential change coming from the federal level that impacts Medicaid, which would trickle down and impact all the way down to the state of California. May not be the, the one piece that needs to happen to solve the problem, but it's definitely a piece of the problem, and hopefully that will go through. I saw a hand in the room. Please come on up to the podium.
John Moss, I survived the Valley Fire, and I'm curious about the home hardening grant, where people get FEMA grants to harden their homes against fire. What I want to know is if the grants are, need to be paid back. I just stood in line and waited and listened to the lady, and she said, well, you know, if you get a grant, you ultimately have to pay it back.
And so I appreciate the public comment, but that would be a question directed towards CalOES and the group that is working on that. This is not necessarily going to be the appropriate venue for that question at this moment in time unless Supervisor Pisca, I know you're heavily involved in that, unless you feel otherwise.
The pilot area is the Kelseyville Riviera, and so that's the only area where this program is.
You don't know if, if you have to pay your FEMA grant back?
You don't have to pay it back. It's, it's a grant, it's not a loan.
It was then too.
No, I, I think we're talking about different programs, but the home hardening that's going on right now is only in the Kelseyville Riviera.
It was, it was FEMA, as I understand. I want to ask a second question. I have recently been out of, out of commission, but I want to know if California is operating its government at a deficit at this point.
And I, I believe that we just stated that we are in a deficit. That number depends on who you talk to. Could be as high as 78 billion, or it could be as low as 53 billion. But at this moment, it's, it's a matter of how much money is being paid in taxes and how much they are collecting in order to say whether they're working in a deficit or not. We are definitely in a deficit year, and, and Mr. Neal.
California as a state.
If you want to add to that, Mr. Neal.
Just make one quick comment through the chair, that there is a provision in the California Constitution that requires a balanced budget. Unlike the federal government, the state cannot carry a deficit across fiscal, the budget for any given fiscal year has to be balanced.
Gotcha.
So the deficit requires, that's why we have to fix the deficit instead of just acknowledging it and moving on.
So that's your answer. Thank you very much for the questions, and thank you, Mr. Neal, for helping me out. I see no further hands up in the chamber or in the Zoom room, and so that will complete this item. Thank you very much for your presentation and for looking out for our priorities at this state.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And we're going to take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 11:05. Let's go ahead and reconvene our meeting, and we will continue from where we left off, which is Item 6.7, our 10:15 a.m. public hearing. Consideration of Resolution Approving Application for Funding and the Execution of a Grant Agreement and Any Amendments There Too from the 2324 Funding Year of the State CDBG Mitigation Resilience Infrastructure Program. And B, authorize the county administrative officer or designee to submit the grant application. We do have a request to continue this item, but I will allow Ms. Lockston to go ahead and speak to that.
Thank you. Terry Lockston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison. We are, the County of Lake is eligible for a $2.3 million allocation under these funds. However, the authorizing resolution requires an exact grant ask in it, and we don't have that yet. Late last week, we had the opportunity to get, receive technical assistance with the funder and discovered that several of the plans that we had hoped to be funded under this program, although they are listed in our Hazard Mitigation Plan, the plans are not eligible for funding. So we're taking that out, and we're looking at the projects that we do have in the grant application to see if we can beef them up a little bit. So we're asking to be continued until next week.
Okay.
I'm certain.
And I do see here that we have March 26, 2024, at 1:00 p.m. Is that, does that need to be changed?
Yeah, until 10:00.
To 10:00 a.m. Okay. And if there's nothing further, I'm going to open it up for public comment regarding the continuation of this item. I can't seem to find Zoom. There we go. No hands in Zoom and no one getting up in the chamber, so bringing it back to the board for a motion to move the item to next week at 10:00 a.m.
Move to continue this item to Tuesday, March 26 at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll see you next week.
See you next week.
So that ends our timed items, and we will go on to items. And if you guys don't mind, I'm going to start off with Item 7.3, since we've had Behavioral Health in the room. Let's start with that one. Consideration of General Fund Loan Request of $3 million and Loan of $1 million from Department of Social Services Realignment Fund. And with that, if we can get Behavioral Health to come up to, take a seat.
Is this, okay, good morning, Mr. Chair. Actually, would it be possible, there is an attachment on the item that I'd like to project. It is the revenue, no, it's the claims one.
The dashboard.
The dashboard. So the memo, hopefully, they, perfect, thank you. The memo hopefully describes our situation. We are well aware that this is a much less than ideal situation. However, we continue to work on a resolution of the billing issues, and I guess at this point, any questions? The memo does describe our situation, so any questions, we can help to clarify that. And with me, I have Christine Andrews, who's our Deputy Director over Administration, as well as Amber Madero, who, or Amber, is that, yes, Amber Madero, who is our Fiscal Manager.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions based on the information provided for the item? I see no questions or comments.
I think.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Yeah. So just reading through it, I was just asking, I wanted to ask just one thing, is that if we're not able to get reimbursed by, by them sooner, do we just ask for another amount or something? Does that work?
That's a great question. Christine?
I wouldn't, so I wouldn't, I would hope.
Can you speak, Michael?
I would hope with what we currently have, that we are billing and that we have fixed, we are getting in a regular routine of billing monthly now, that with corrected claims that are going up and coming back, that we wouldn't have to come back and ask for more.
Okay.
Further than that, I would offer that we'd be happy to come back on a schedule that you all determine if you wish to present, to give an update about this. But it, it's hard, it's hard to foretell, but as best as we can foretell, we believe that, that we shouldn't have to come back and ask for more money.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? So I, I will make some comments. First and foremost, this is not an issue within the department. I just want to make that clear, that this is an issue with state reform, state changes that have not panned out in the cleanest, most efficient ways for us to be reimbursed. I did reach out to CSAC to ask about what's CSAC doing about this. In fact, I appreciate you bringing this to us because CSAC was not necessarily very well aware of this situation, but has found further information to say, yes, this is a known problem. Nobody's really reached out from other counties asking CSAC for help. I didn't ask for help, just checking in to see if they were already taking any initiative to try to advocate for counties to get things changed. There's definitely no promises that things will be resolved. In fact, we already provided some of the reserves for you to help out with a similar situation. I think the situation has evolved. It's not exactly where we were back. I think that was November or December that we did that.
That's correct.
And so I, I do worry about the state, the conversation we just had with the deficits and the cuts. Granted, these are bills that have been appropriately and timely provided, that should be paid within the fiscal year that we're requesting to get paid from. And I'll just be blunt, I don't have much faith that the state cares to hurry. I think we will get our money in the long run, but I don't know that they care to hurry. So I think that, I, I know you and I talked about this, about the potential coming from the board schedule. I'd love to hear monthly from Behavioral Health of where we are, because right now we're looking at a total of 4 million with help from general fund, help from social services, and a little tiny portion from health services as well. And that's to cover us all the way through June, and I think we need to be aware of when, when do we need to transition to, and I don't, I don't even want to know what that transition looks like, because it's unfortunate that that means decrease of services of some kind of how to deal with this if they're not paying us. I don't, I don't even know what that looks like, but none of it sounds good to me. And I don't even know what that should look like. But I think if we continue to have the conversation, to stay apprised as to things are changing, things are not changing, then that can provide us the need to put together a committee, to meet with our state delegates, to bring something up further up the ladder at CSAC, whatever that case might be. But I just, that's, what you provide is important. I don't want to lose what you provide, but eventually, there's not much more that can be provided to take care of something that the state's not giving back to us without eating up other services from other departments and such. And so I think it's important that we just stay apprised as to what the status is and, and how we can change things if we need to change things. Supervisor Pisca?
Well, and also in the memo are these three steps that we need to follow up with immediately, and I think we need to be really a sort of an aggressive beginning today. And given, given the state's financial situation, which we've been mentioning for months now, it's important that we have reserves and we maintain reserves, because this is, could just be one of many situations that come. And so I'm, I'm glad that we have been really fiscally conservative over the last couple of years, building up our reserves so that we have the ability to cover through these difficult times. So, you know, file the complaint with the Mental Health Advisory Service Authority, report the situation to the California Board of Health Directors Association, explore support available from our state legislative, legislative delegation and CSAC and RCRC, and just hit it as hard as we can, starting today.
Thank you for those comments. I agree. Just as a note as well, we're kind of doing, continuing to do information gathering with other counties that are involved in the system, and so far, all other counties are experiencing the same challenges. Amber has really taken the lead on that. Even counties that purchased revenue and billing services, which we did not, because we are, we have always done it and very successfully, they have the same issue. So it doesn't appear to matter who's doing the billing, it's still not going through. And of course, I'm really glad for you to reach out, we'll continue this, but it is kind of wild because of the 1.5 billion claims that are registered in the system beginning June, or excuse me, July 1 of last year, of the fiscal year, only about 30% of that has been paid out to counties. So whereas others, counties have got to be feeling that pinch somewhere. So I feel like we're probably the first to come forward. It's an uncomfortable position to be in, and I, you know, but we've done our very best, and so we can say that we've done our best, and this is just our position. So that's, you know, hopefully this, I don't want to say opens the floodgates for other counties to come forward, but I kind of hope that it does, because we're stronger together.
Any other, Supervisor Green?
Just playing devil's advocate, in the memo, it notes that other counties have suspended payments to the contracted providers. Obviously, we don't want to do that, but that seems to be the more common practice than what is being proposed here. So just for my own education and the public's education, why not suspend payments to contracted providers? Or alternatively, why not suspend or throttle back new services? Because it sounds like we're going to get some traction finally with this new payment system. So right now, it's just all alone, all the time. I'm just curious, you know, are there internal billing practices such as suspending or throttling back new services that could be considered or should be considered? And I'm only asking that because other counties have not chosen to proceed as you're proposing today.
Well, can I just answer? I don't think we want to get into a situation where we're defaulting on our contracts.
Yeah.
Ever.
The biggest impact of pulling back services would be our children. So you would have RCS children, foster care children, LCOE, Lake County Office of Education children. Those are the big ones that we bill on, that we would have to, that have thanked us for not pulling back on our contracting, because RCS has been impacted for not being paid already by other counties. So it would be our children who are affected if we pulled back on our contracted providers.
It's also our, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Please.
It's also our hospital bills.
Yeah.
And we're working on some data to present about that, but it appears that our hospital costs have dramatically increased, and that's due to both rate changes but also utilization. And so the increase in expense that everybody is feeling right now is, we feel that and we see that too. Expenses have increased across the board for all services, and so there could be some advocacy we could take, I don't know how successful, to pause increases in rates with the hospitals, but they have their own lobbying, so I, I don't know. We're also impacted, and I just want to give a heads up, that the Department of State Hospitals, where we put some of our most sick and also dangerous people, you know, those who are on Murphy's conservatorships, which is like they committed a felony that's pretty bad, and they have to go to the state hospital because they're incompetent to stand trial. We presently have three people at the state hospital. And last year, they implemented a sanction program where if you went over your quota, which our quota is two, that you would get a sanction. And so that sanction's about $100,000 per person, and so we are probably going to be sanctioned as well. They are going, and this is just the whole fiscal portrait here, and it's something I'm going to bring next week when I go with CBHDA to lobbying day, because effectively, what the state hospitals lobbied for was to put the pressure back on behavioral health systems, to stop people from being conserved and stop people from being so sick, which is pretty wild, because it's like going to a group of oncologists and saying, you know what? It's your fault that cancer rates are so high. And then sanctioning them for the amount of cancer patients that they treat. That's exactly what's happening here. You would never do that to any other healthcare system, yet these are the kinds of things that happen to behavioral health. So really, when we get Murphy's conservatorships, the system has failed so many times, so far upstream, and then it becomes our problem. So there's a lot of work around that, but we will see a So there's a lot of work around that, but we will see a fiscal impact of that, I'm quite sure.
And I, I don't agree that we should follow what other counties are doing. I think defaulting, we, we, we struggle enough to get the relationships to provide the services because most of those services are out of county. So we have a very indirect relationship that has to be built up over the many years. By defaulting, we're basically saying, we can trickle this down to be a burden for you, not to be a burden on us. And obviously, that's what's happening to us already. We should not behave in the same way and pass that burden on. I think eventually, maybe if things go really for way too long, we need to all have a conversation and say, how can we continue to work together rather than us just saying, nah, we're, you're good, we're not going to give you anything. We have a contract. We have to, we should be bound by that contract and shouldn't just breach the contract because we can. So I don't want to go there, but I think that I'm going to look first for consensus on getting a monthly update to know where we are, if everybody's okay with getting that. I'm, I have a couple of questions left. One of them is, and thank you for the response that you provided me, Director Jones, that some of the reserves that was used for the previous situation with the electronic health records not functioning appropriately that were part of that pilot program, that some of that was placed back in the reserves. My question is, why aren't your reserves being utilized today in addition to what else you're asking versus just general fund and social services realignment?
So the reserves were used already. This is after our reserves being used. So last year's fiscal impact, the reserves went back in, but currently our reserves have been used. This, the deficit is with our reserves included.
So we paid it back and then we had to use it again.
So I misunderstood, or I only got the timeline until it came back in?
Yeah. So last year, we didn't end up using all of our reserves for us not being able to bill last year's services. And so, yeah, the reserves have been, this is after the reserves being used right now.
Okay. And there's an equity issue in anything that's going to impact your department that I'm very worried about. It's the, maybe it's offensive what I'm about to say, but it's, it's those that struggle the most that are going to be impacted the most, which seems to be the typical process of how we do things when we have to look at what do we have to change to stay within the black. And so I'm very concerned about what all of this means. I know that I'm not, I, I, I'm not comfortable saying yes to all the way through June 30th, but as long as we can meet every 30 days and reorganize our thought process and our potential future actions on how to change and how to pivot, then I'm going to be okay with saying yes today, but I'm very uncomfortable with just saying all the way through rather than what's already done in the past. So I, I think the conversation you bring up, Supervisor Green, a part of that I disagree on the defaulting, but the other part about services, if it's not services from behavioral health, it'll be services from somebody else eventually, because there's only so much that we can do to provide assistance until this problem is solved. So I'll leave it at that at this moment in time, but it looks like we have consensus to come back every 30 days and hopefully the next 30 days we'll solve this problem. That would be great. Anything further?
Yeah.
Vice Chair?
Yes, no, I was just, my question was just in general, and I will, when we have member issues at RCRC, I'll bring it up because I know that they're all probably dealing with this as well, all the other rural counties. And so, so yeah, I'll see what I can do there too, get it under radar.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green?
Just in addition to the other three bullet points that you're going to initiate, the contracted providers are the major beneficiaries of the action being proposed here today, and they don't necessarily have motivation to join in the party of advocating for statewide reform. So if you can at least signal, some of these nonprofits may be in different counties and they're getting a hit, I think you mentioned RCS was getting hit elsewhere. I just don't want to signal to these contracted providers that just because we're fortunate enough to have a loan amount to cover this, that they don't have a horse in this race and that they should be doing their own advocacy to smooth this out. Because it is fortunate that we can do this, but I guess the reason many other counties are not able to do that is we, we can't count on that. So definitely the, the providers have some need to advocate on this.
I don't have a problem with that. The louder we can make our voice be, the better. And in the long run, it's looking at their bottom line as well to advocate with us.
Yes, due to the good relationships that we've built with our contracted providers, we can, I mean, have those conversations with them, and I suspect they would be supportive.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? Let's open it up for public. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? See no one in the chamber. We do have Patrick Sullivan. Who may be speaking of liquidity.
Good morning. The issue I wanted to raise, and it's not specific, I guess, just to this topic, but with the state in general being delayed and making their payments, is that there is an impact on our treasury pool in this, in that when we loan money to the state, we do lose, we do lose out on the earnings associated with that. And as the state goes deeper into deficit, if they start delaying across multiple programs like this, traditionally, they have not recouped, we have not recouped any sort of earnings lost from them. And so on $5 million, for instance, you know, over the course of the year, on our current rate, that's going to work out to about 150,000 in general fund impact. So I, I realize we're a rock and a hard place, and I'm not, I'm not saying the board should do anything different, but I think it's just something I hope we can keep in mind as we work with the state, because this impact will continue to expand across programs.
And while you're there, Mr. Sullivan, I, I kind of jokingly said that you may speak on liquidity, but that was a question that I had in my mind is that we do have some of our reserved funds in some, whether it's three months, six months, or whatever the term is for the funds that have been invested, $4 million. Just want to check in real quick as far as its availability, especially over the course of the next three, two to three months.
We can definitely field the $4 million. I think my concern would be is if, if the same request is going to start coming from other programs as well, I, I definitely would want to be aware of it because we would potentially need to restructure and make some decisions over the next few months about how we're going to approach it.
Yeah.
So I guess that's just where I'd say, if we're talking to the state, there's a very real impact here on another front.
And I do know I spoke to Director Jones about this in my 20 years ago when doing medical billing. There is precedence for interest for payments that have been held on to for a certain amount of period, and I think that we should be looking into that as well because we are having to do things right now that are slightly uncomfortable, glad it's available, but very uncomfortable to do. And especially if we're missing out on investment opportunities as well, that this is an impact, indirect, other indirect impacts as well. And so I don't know what that means or what that will end up being, but definitely I think that should be a, a topic to discuss as well. And so I'm going to go ahead and close public input since there's no more hands in the Zoom room or in the chamber and bringing it back to the board. And at this moment in time, I know it says that we are going to approve. Are we doing both this approval and the next approval as well? I'm looking at CAO Parker, or maybe I should be looking at Ms. Moreno?
I was going to, if, if, right now, you're just doing the 7.3, which is to enable.
The 7.3, which is to agree to enable and move forward with the resolution?
Okay.
And then we'll bring Casey up for the actual action of offering the resolution.
So basically, the motion for this opens up the next item.
Correct, sir.
I know it says loan, which is a little awkward in the sense that loans usually come with a term and come with some other, it feels more like a borrowing between departments. What's the terminology here and?
We are using the term loan because it is going to be paid back in 12 months, but we're not doing the interest rate or anything.
Okay, so 12 months is the term at this moment in time.
And you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's really an accounting adjustment, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So I'll move to approve the fund loan requested, $3 million in loan, $1 million for Department of Social Services Realignment Fund with the caveat of having monthly meetings or updates or something like that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I need to ask for just a quick clarification. Is the $1 million Social Services Realignment Fund inclusive of the 130,000 from Health Services, or does that need to be called out separately? And I apologize for.
It can be called out separately. It is not part of the 1 million.
Okay, but we need to add it in there because, okay.
Correct.
If it's possible to amend the motion?
Yes, I'll amend the motion to add separately $130,000. Is that accurate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Okay, let's go on to item 7.4, consideration of resolution approving a short-term loan.
Elise, you can probably stay there.
Oh, sorry, Chair.
She's trying to sneak. Consideration of resolution approving a short-term loan from General Fund by way of Technology Reserve Fund 154 to Behavioral Health Services Fund 145 in the amount of $3 million.
No. So after review of the reserve accounts and what is available, we found the technology reserve was the one that was not anticipated to be needed to draw down any of those funds in the next 12 months. So we feel it's safe to pull $3 million from that and allocate it to behavioral health.
Okay, and that's the LATCF that was originally set for that, or is that a separate?
That's a separate one, yeah. This one's the technology, which is mostly going to be used for the auditor for their new accounting software.
CAO Park?
Thank you. I also want to note, we should note that we did work in conjunction with the Audit Control's office in this discussion and recommendation.
Any questions or comments? Supervisor Green?
Just a question. I guess I was looking for a companion reso for the, the 1 million from Social Services. That transfer doesn't require a reso?
No, it does not.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. And I see no hands in Zoom and no hands in the chamber. Let's bring it back to the board.
I offer the resolution.
And the resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Aye. Let's hope we can change this uncomfortable moment. 7.5. Thank you so much, Ms. Moreno. Consideration of Amendment Number Two to the Agreement Between the County of Lake, Lake County Behavioral Health Services as Lead Administrative Entity for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Adventist Health Clear Lake Hospital Incorporated in the amount of $443,000 for fiscal years 21 through 24, and authorize the board chair to sign. Director Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, this is an agreement we're bringing on behalf of the Lake County Continuum of Care as the administrative entity. This agreement actually appeared in an earlier agenda, however, that was prior to the Lake County Continuum of Care's Executive Committee approving this agreement. Effectively, it retroactively reimburses Adventist for services provided within the purview of the ESG, Emergency Services Housing Grant for Housing Navigation Services. That's what I got.
Perfect. And I apologize that as, also full disclosure, as the Chair of the COC, we did approve this. Unfortunately, I couldn't get it on our agenda fast enough, and that's why it had to be pulled from our previous agenda, but glad that it's here. Any questions or comments? All right, let's go ahead and open up for the public. Any questions or comments? And bringing it back to the board for action.
Move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Agreement Between the County of Lake, Lake County Behavioral Health Services as Lead Administrative Entity for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Adventist Health Clear Lake Hospital, Inc., in the amount of $443,000 for fiscal years 2021 through 2024, and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? And motion carries. Thank you very much. Glad to see that one checked off. Okay, we have calendars. That is our last open session. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped 7.2. That's right. Thank you very much for reminding me. Consideration of Appointment to the East Region Town Hall. We have one applicant. Any comments?
This is the first time this council has been full for a long time. I'll just say that with.
Congratulations. You need that for helping you with quorum.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Let's open it up for the public. Comments or questions? And let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the appointment of Maria Khan to the East Region Town Hall.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Now I believe that we've completed all the open session except for calendars. Who wants to go first?
I'll go first.
Sure.
LAFCO tomorrow. And then Thursday, looks like we have a clerk and PG&E carbonizer discussion that's going to be happening. At the RRA meeting yesterday in the city of Clear Lake, thought that's, you know, was a good meeting. We're continuing to move forward with some of the conversations we're having, whether it's biomass, other opportunities with the RRA. Also attended, like I said, this weekend, the Lower Lake Action Committee Group fundraiser. I thought it was a really good event. Saw Supervisor Sabatia there, and man, the house was packed. So that was a good place for the Chino Dinner. Thursday have a call, or Friday, have a call with CAO Susan Parker. And then also wanted to report on Workforce Alliance in North Bay. I had that meeting last week on Friday here in the courthouse, continuing to move forward with, you know, the JPA members and, you know, continually moving things. There are a couple of projects here in Lake County. There's going to be a nurses recruitment and talking about that in April. I think it's April 18th. I could have the wrong date, but I'll make sure to get that out. It's going to be at Robinson, talking about recruiting the workforce, you know, here to local rural communities to get that nursing positions filled throughout county and in the public. So, you know, interesting that we're doing that also. In Lake County, also approved submitting a grant for $6 million of workforce within coordination with TARA, a work group being done here, something that's been talked about for a couple of years, but we approved that also at the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. So back here on Tuesday for the meeting. That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry. And a meeting to look at a piece of property in the Middletown proper area right downtown. So going to meet with Center Hospital, have a conversation. Don't know where that goes, but wanted to report that to.
Awesome. Supervisor Green?
Thank you. You already mentioned this at the start of the meeting, but the swearing-in ceremony Friday, Sheriff Howe, Under Sheriff Bingham, and just seeing all those new deputies coming online, it was really, I know it was important to them, but I think it was important to us as supervisors, just seeing such a hopeful, uplifting ceremony and understanding how significant it is to finally have a, a, a lot of new hires in our department. That just really spoke to me quite a bit. I also want to thank everyone, including Supervisor Crandall. We had our last Community Vision Forum Planning Committee meeting last night, and that's been kind of a multi-year arc. It's been a privilege to serve on that, and I know the report will be coming to this body hopefully in May. And so thanks to everyone who participated in that. I have a note about an IFT only. I don't know if there's an EMCC meeting attached to that, but Supervisor Sabatia, I'll check with you on that. Looks like a Blue Ribbon Committee for the Rehabilitation of Clear Lake will be meeting at 10:00 AM at Lakeport City Hall on Thursday, so I'll be attending that. Friday, I'll be meeting with Director Arton from Health Services for a little orientation. If I'm filling If I'm feeling really frisky on Saturday, there's a bingo fundraiser for Lakeport Senior Center from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So it'll be a big old bingo event. And then I don't have an agenda yet, but it looks like Monday, Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council, we should be meeting at the Women's Clubhouse at 5:00 PM. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
Tomorrow I'm meeting the constituent in Kelseyville and like getting caught up on a few things. Then Thursday I have the Home Hardening Assessment Training starting at 9:00 AM in Kelseyville Riviera. Then the Clerk meeting, then the meeting with the CNRA and then meeting with the our Public Health Director and then Calvary Council. Friday opioid settlement work group. And then Monday my meeting with CAO Parker.
Vice Chair Crandall?
Yes. So I had, I had, of course, that meeting last night as well with the visioning group and as Supervisor Green said, we'll be bringing those recommendations forward. Won't go too further into it. He pretty much summarized it, met with the public health director as well on Monday. Of course, over the weekend, we had the Vision of Hope Village that was in Nice. That was a really well-attended event and it went well. There was also a, an event at Big Valley for Suicide Awareness and it was good to see a lot of representation from people all around the lake, including even some of our county positions as well. So behavioral health and social services and, you know, probation, you know, they're all in attendance on a weekend as well. So just, just highlighting that, you know, they're getting it done, you know. So the Pancake Breakfast for the Tango Mike put on this Saturday was, was a hit as well. And I went there in the morning and touched base with everybody and sat with some veterans. Friday, of course, attended the swearing in as well and it was great to see all of the officers swear in, even the other officers that were in the room that were just there. Sheriff Howe made them all come up and swear in. Just really good to see the work come to fruition, everything we've talked about trying to do to get them the resources they need so we can get them, you know, functioning the way they know best and giving them the tools they need. So, you know, I just really feel like the families there were just, it was just really, it was a blessing to see that, you know, lots of family members, people having their babies, you know, while they swear in, things like that, just, you know, it was just great. I don't know, I haven't seen a lot of that since the military. I know there's been a couple of other ones, but this one was really special. Anyhow, let's see, I'll go back to my RCRC meeting. The Secretary for California State Transportation Agency, Toks Amashakin, Amashakin, I think that's how I pronounce it. He was there giving a presentation, talking about the, his efforts to ensure rural communities thrive and to maximize funding to help our rural counties. And there were, I want to say at least 15 to 20 questions. They were only able to get to 10. So I did what I, what I could to get out in the hallway and talk to him. And so I caught him right before he got in the elevator and let him know that, you know, we've had quite a bit of, because that was one of the biggest topics of discussion was safety when it came to highways and transportation and whatnot. And I let him know in our communities, we've had quite a bit of deaths, accidents, all sorts of, you know, just concern about people on the side of the highway, safety measures. I know that the, and explained how the Caltrans and collaboration with CHP had put together a grant to get the rapid rectangular flashing beacons on Highway 20 and among other spots to help. But I also emphasized Highway 20 would probably need a little more than that when it comes to, you know, when it comes to these measures because a lot of the people, despite the South County, you know, they're making those measures to send more traffic around that way. There's still people that come through that side and it would be ideal to look at the high-intensity activated crosswalks. And he was pretty open to hearing that, but what was even more impressive was his secretary was knew Highway 20 and mentioned Nice Frosty and says, I think you guys do need that. Your county does need that type of service around the lake because you have a lot of crosswalks that cross the lake. So it's a, so made a connection there and emailed and hopefully keep pushing that. But I do know at least that at the minimum, we are getting the rapid rectangular flashing beacons because of the grant with CHP. I just was like, I think each town needs a hawk as well because that stops traffic and gives more safety to it. But yeah, no, it was just an opportunity and I took that. So that was the RCRC meeting. Everything else basically was kind of some of the things we talked about with the bills and whatnot. Some of it was brought up there. There was other cannabis measures I seen too that I'll send to you. Let's see. We have tomorrow, Agenda Review Worth, West Region Town Hall in Upper Lake at 5:30. Thursday, Blue Ribbon Committee. Then if I can fit in the EPA, Farm Ranch and Rural Communities Ad hoc Committee. I think I have a meeting here at the office with County Council. Tango Mike will be in the evening. That's where we'll be presenting the proclamation that we passed last week for them for their 21 years. So we'll go there and read that off and send all of those to the soldiers that are deployed. So each one will get one of their packages. Let's see, Monday we'll have the CAO meeting and then I think there's something else that just got sent, but I don't know, I'll have to check. But back here Tuesday for the Board Supervisors meeting.
Thank you very much. Tomorrow I start and promise to make it to the Agenda Review. That was a very bad last week Wednesday. I apologize for that. Continue in Lakeport with LAFCO. Do we have AVA?
No, we don't want to check in on that.
Okay. And so, which is actually perfect because I think our LAFCO agenda should be short enough that I'll be able to make it back to Clear Lake to meet with the Faith Leadership Group that we are trying to figure out how this group can work with the COC in providing services, whatever they are offering, whether that's, whether that's worship services, whether that's food services, whether that's lodging services, whatever they have available, we want to better understand how we can work together to provide to those in need. Also, we'll be meeting with Greg Dameron for the Food Policy to better prepare for our Friday meeting. Have IFT, it does only say IFT. I don't see MCC even though it has EMCC bylaws being reviewed. So maybe we need to reach out to Rainey and kind of check in to see if it's just mistitled. I'll check, we'll talk. I have a meeting at the Law Library later on that afternoon. Then I'll be meeting with Matthew Rothstein and with Supervisor Pyska. Then I have a strategic plan meeting for the Lake County Continuum of Care, end up over in the city of Clear Lake for the City Council meeting to keep track of what they're working on. I'll be also here on Friday for the opioid abatement settlement. And then once that's over with, I'll be joining an ad hoc committee from the Food Policy Council as we finalize our strategic plan before our next meeting. And then nothing over the weekend at this moment. I am meeting with the Sheriff-elect on Monday morning. I don't know if we finalized the Roadmap Task Force meeting, Vice Chair Crandall. I do show it here on our calendar.
Yeah.
And so, and we'll see what happens. And then meeting with our CAO to be prepared for a meeting on the 26th. We'll say that the swearing in ceremony, similar to Vice Chair Crandall, been to a couple in the past. This one was definitely a jam-packed room. I don't know if it was the timeline of the amount of time in between swearing in ceremonies, but it made for a much more intimate and personal swearing in ceremony that I thought was great. Shout out to two young fellows from Clear Lake, Deputy Smart and Deputy Jamison. Seeing them definitely put a smile on my face as we see our locals climbing up into those positions, not only leaving town to be able to join the force, but then coming back and serving their communities, obviously taking their adult responsibilities in their community very seriously and I appreciate that. The Chapeau feed, I think I'm still full from that. It was great. And from what I understand and checking in on Sunday, they, they made quite a good revenue from that and we'll, we'll see that in all of their festivities and activities that they do in Lower Lake, which I appreciate. So happy to support that and thankful to see you there as well. All right, that's it. That's all that I have. We will be going into closed session. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, title, Public Services Director. 8.2, Addendum, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, FERC Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. And with that, we will continue in closed session. Thank you for joining us today.